Okay, good morning, everyone. We're gonna start our meeting now. All commissioners are present, other than Commissioner Singh, who has an excused absence. We've already checked everybody in, so I'm gonna move to item two on the agenda, the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for that?
So.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Now, we're gonna have item three, adoption of the December seventeenth regular meeting minutes. Does anyone need to make any changes on that, or just I'll just ask for a motion to approve it?
Let's go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Uh, moving on to Trent Rohr, which he's gonna be running a little bit late. So we're gonna move into item five, which is the. Oh, yeah, we can, we can hold on, listen. Liz is suggesting that we wait a couple of minutes to see if Trent is gonna be joining us quickly, and if not, then then we'll move on to the employee of the month and then come back to Trent when he's on. Correct? Okay. Right. Okay, so we're gonna wait a couple of minutes for Trent to hook up with us. Uh, then we'll go from there.
Mr. President, you can do a little soft shoe.
You want me to do a little soft shoe dance?
Yeah.
I don't think that's necessary, and I think everybody would laugh and log off. I would say. I don't know.
Good morning.
Okay, Trent, I believe that you just got hooked up to us. Can you hear me?
Yes, President Khan, I can.
Okay, so thus far, we had the roll call, the adoption of the agenda and the adoption of the minutes from December seventeenth. The only person that is not with us, Trent, today is Commissioner Singh, who has an, obviously, an excused absence. But the rest of the commissioners are here, so right now, we're gonna move on to item four, which is you, Trent, for your report.
Great. Commissioner Khan, you can hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Apologies for being late. Thank you for bearing with me. Um, so let's jump right in. I'm gonna be looking to the side a little bit, don't let it distract you, because my report's on a different screen and like cameras. So, um, just start, let me start with the federal level. Obviously, there's been a flurry of activity, um, positive activity, I guess, if I can editorialize, uh, from the Biden administration, uh, sending a whole slew of executive orders, undoing a lot of what President Trump had left in his wake. Uh, exact orders ranging to COVID response, round vaccine and other, and other interventions, changes in FEMA reimbursement for localities, I'll touch on in a second, um, and then significant investments in food support for our low-income households and individuals, and I'll touch on that when I talk about our program updates around CalFresh. But basically, significant increases in CalFresh benefits for targeted populations. Um, so the FEMA reimbursement, you may have seen in the Chronicle, in the Chronicle, I think, did an article a day or two ago. As you may recall, uh, under FEMA's support for states and localities, they are reimbursing us seventy-five percent of our costs for a lot of our pandemic response, so things like food support, uh, and most notably, our hotel system that we brought on for shelter in place and for isolation and quarantine. So President Biden, in one of his early executive orders, increases the reimbursement from seventy-five percent federal to one hundred percent. So FEMA will be reimbursing us for a hundred percent of our costs for our alternative housing systems or hotels, uh, but also for some of our food interventions as well. We haven't seen any regulations come out of FEMA, either Region Nine or nationally, nor have we seen anything from CAL, uh, OES, Office of Emergency Services, so we're waiting. But we do know that it will be at a minimum one hundred percent of costs for individuals who fall in the vulnerable category, which is ages sixty-five and above, or an underlying health condition. We think it's prospective rather than retrospective, so we don't think we're gonna be able to claim back to eleven or ten months ago when we started this operation, but at least moving forward, it looks like obviously a larger federal support. So that begs the question, then, how does that impact the design and structure of our hotel system for homeless, and what we are doing is looking towards expanding the number of rooms in our portfolio with an eye towards increasing the number of vulnerable homeless we can get off the street over the next month or two. I should say the FEMA reimbursement is, is going to be in place until the end of September of this year, so the end of the federal fiscal year, September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. So we're working with our real estate partners, city attorney's office, uh, out of the Human Services Branch at the COVID Command Center to see which other hotel owners and operators might want to lease to the city. So we're beginning that literally, um, this week, since the announcement from FEMA came down last week. And we're also in partnership with the Department of Homelessness and Support of Housing, looking to see what capacity our community-based organizations have to staff these hotels. You recall, we transitioned from a hotel staffing model of disaster service workers, city employees, to nonprofit fiscal community services, as an example, and so they will have to hire up staff if they're gonna support additional hotels. So it's, you know, a lot of moving parts, but the intent is, and certainly the interest and direction from the mayor is to increase the number of hotel rooms, some more homeless individuals. Um, we won't go into super detail in the one point nine trillion dollar economic relief proposal that the president put forward, because at this point, it is simply a proposal, and there will be a lot of back and forth before anything moves, of course, and hopefully something does pass, but just sort of a flavor. He does support relief for states, localities, and schools proposing three hundred and fifty billion dollars nationwide to support not only our activations around the pandemic, but to support states and localities who suffered significant revenue loss, tax revenue loss due to the economic slowdown. I mentioned the food support, that's additional food support is also in that relief package, rental assistance and eviction prevention, additional money for an income tax credit and childcare support, support for small businesses. So it's, you know, it's a really, it's a very comprehensive package, you know, at one point nine trillion dollars, it should be. But there's, you know, there's a ways to go. Keep, um, you all posted as that moves, hopefully it moves and as it moves along. So at the state level, and I'll touch on the COVID level after a little broader on the state, um, the governor did extend the eviction moratorium through June thirtieth, while California is working to deploy a very large amount of federal money that the state got for rental, basically rental aid, rental assistance for households that couldn't pay the rent due to losses. Two point six billion dollars statewide to be sent out. It's unclear whether it's gonna be sent out through nonprofits, cities and counties, cities or counties or both, or all of the above, and so we're sort of waiting on how. Um, and just legislatively, I just wanted to touch on a couple items that we're pursuing for this year. The legislative cycle or processes obviously is gonna look different this year with no in-person committee hearings. You know, and sort of navigating the legislative and budget initiative process remotely is, you know, it's difficult, difficult to get our points across to legislators, to other stakeholders, but nevertheless, we do have a few initiatives that we're actively supporting, along with the County Welfare Directors Association. Um, one has to do specifically with the pandemic response, but beyond, and that's providing a statewide service for counties for telephonic signature function for all of our programs, which basically allows our applicants and current recipients to either apply for renewed benefits using a telephonic signature, meaning the it's approved. Is it? I'm sorry. Just flag me if it does. Is this a little better, Commissioner?
Thank you.
I'll just get closer to the mic. My face will cover more of the screen. Anyway, so telephonic signature, we have, you know, shown that we're able to maintain benefits and get additional households and individuals onto benefits remotely, and telephonic signature is a key piece of that, so pushing forward for that could be statewide for all programs. We're also looking to extend the eligibility for CalWorks cash assistance for families or parents whose kids are placed into foster care up to a hundred and eighty days or six months. Um, and that's when the county determines, in conjunction with protective service workers and others, determines that the CalWorks cash assistance provides help to that family to reunify with their child or children, and so we're pushing that as a legis, as a legislation as well. Um, and then the last piece has to do with the last legislative item priority for the year has to do with the transition from the federal 4E funded system into the Families First Prevention and Services Act, known as FFPSA. FFPSA was, is a federal statute that allows us to use federal money more flexibly in the front end to prevent children from being put into foster care. The 4E system prior to FFPSA, we can only draw down the federal dollars once a child is removed, which is, you know, from a policy lens, kind of a perverse design, and so we want to be able to use federal money upfront to keep families intact to support that federal initiative. We're pushing to get fifty million dollars statewide to really develop that, that prevention infrastructure in counties, about ten million in county staff training, but then forty million or so for half year and eighty million annual to allow counties to invest in front-end services using state dollars and then drawing down, hopefully, the federal dollars on top of that. So in total, if it passed, would be ninety million dollar package on an annual basis. Um, and then just a couple, uh, local announcements, and then I'll go into the COVID detail. So Mayor Bridge probably saw, uh, appointed or nominated in the board confirmed assessor recorder Carmen Chu to serve as new city administrator, replacing Naomi Kelly. As you know, the city minister oversees twenty-five city departments, sort of the operations of the city, right, from public works to human resources, digital IT, among many others. It's a great pick. Carmen is a really good partner with the agency for a long time. And then just yesterday, the mayor appointed Joaquin Torres, who is the current director of the Department of Office of Economic and Workforce Development, and Joaquin will move over to fill Carmen's role as assistant superintendent. I mean, a good announcement coming out of the board in partnership with the mayor is that the Board of Supervisors approving twenty-five million dollars in grants and zero interest loans as a way to keep them operational, given COVID has reduced their allowable class size, which reduces their reimbursement. Providers have additional cost, the PPE, provision PPE for staff, retrofitting some of their centers to make it more COVID safe, and so this city dollars that came through Proposition F in November twenty twenty is gonna be used for that, to support our system of subsidized childcare in the city, which of course, we rely on for our parents who are needed for work or to transition back into the. Get a sip of water. So now on to COVID. Obviously, that's dominating conversation nationally and statewide, and as it, as it should. So the good news in San Francisco is it appears that the, the post-holiday surges are subsiding. It's indicated by, by the when I give my report to you, you know, we track as a city eight data points having to do with the healthcare system capacity, the disease situation, and our ability to control the disease. We're in the green on five of the eight categories, green being the best, which includes acute bed, acute hospital bed capacity, as well as ICU capacity, which, both of which, given the current projections of the virus, the Health Department is not, they're not projecting to run out of either ICU beds or acute care beds through the progression of the disease over the next number of months. Um, given the assumption there is that we continue to do what we've been doing as a city, which is wearing masks and physically distant, even as we begin to open up the economy. The number that has been of most concern, because the hospital capacity has been, we've been able to manage it through a combination of efforts around alternative housing, as well as suspension of non-elected surgeries and things like that, is the number of COVID cases per one hundred thousand people, and that has now dropped to twenty-three per one hundred thousand, and that's data as I guess. Just to give you a sense for comparison, when we were at the peak of our third surge, the rate forty-four positive cases per one hundred thousand, so we're now almost half of that in a pretty steep downward decline. Um, which is, of course, great news. And then the other piece around that is what's called the RE, or repeat factor, which is it's data telling, sort of indicating how quickly the virus is transmitting in the city, and anything under one means the virus is, is decreasing rather than increasing, and right now, the RE is point nine two in the city, which means for every person who has COVID, each year, they only transmit it to less than a person, point nine three people. When it's bad, when it was bad in the surge, we're at one point three, one point four. You know, obviously, meaning it's, it's multiplying for every person, one and a half people get infected. That's all great news. The, the caution, um, though, is, you know, the virus, this is not from my mind, this is from the Director of Public Health, the doctor's mind, that they know, or we know now what the virus does, it's very predictable, and when there's more activity in the economy, and there's more people out and about, there's more people on immunity, there are more people, you know, pick a spot. Um, then the virus begins to grow again, and people, you know, it's transmitted more, and again, and with the new strains that appear to be more contagious, there still is significant concern in DPA. So, uh, you know, his, his discussion, Dr. Colfax, is we are at risk of a fourth surge if we don't continue to mask, if we don't continue to social distance. You know, really cautious not to let our guard down, you know, let's not have get-togethers at our house, let's not go out to dinner outside with with different households, uh, things of that, things of that sort, and so it's, you know, continue to be responsible while the city, you know, prepares for the vaccine rollout, or is rolling out the vaccine, but prepares for a much larger rollout, and I'll touch on that. So because, of course, the better numbers and the better numbers statewide, the governor lifted the place order, and counties are now returned to the purple tier, which means some gates open up in terms of what we can do, outdoor dining of up to outdoor dining of table limit size of six and up to two households. I'm not gonna walk through everything, basically increased capacity in retail stores and grocery stores. Hair salons are opening, nail salons, things like that, similar to what it was before we had to lock it down in mid-December. So now on vaccination, and you know, there's been understandably, a ton of confusion and uncertainty around what's going on with vaccinations, largely due to changes at the federal level in terms of prioritization, changes in the state level of prioritization, and the biggest factor being, we don't know how much vaccine we're gonna get at any given time. The positive is, the city has been very effective in vaccinating vulnerable residents of long-term care facilities, our skilled nursing facilities, Laguna Honda, and other residential care facilities for the elderly, frontline healthcare workers, who are obviously most at risk of contracting the virus, and then the next group are individuals over sixty-five. So to sort of highlight the challenge, given those three groups, when you look at frontline healthcare workers, people over sixty-five, and residents of our long-term care facilities, that's about two hundred and ten thousand people. And each of them need two doses, so that's four hundred and twenty thousand vaccine, vaccine, vaccines that we need. And today, the entire county, so Department of Public Health and what are called multi-county entities, which are basically HMOs, healthcare providers, like Pfizer and I think maybe Health, et cetera, so we're here. We've just received, among all those groups, about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand vaccines, and, you know, we need about four hundred and twenty thousand just to get through those groups. So even though people age sixty-five, as an example, are now eligible in Tier One A, which is first brother vaccinations, it doesn't mean that everyone sixty-five or older can get one, because we don't have enough vaccine. If, if people are, you know, calling their HMO and contacting Kaiser, the answer is no, very often, it's, well, why is it no? I'm in Tier One A, and the answer is no, because we don't have. The city is setting, we have one mass vaccination site out at City College and are prepared to set up one at Moscone, and then another one in the southeast part of the city. Uh, but we are not gonna do that until we have vaccine, it's just a waste of resources to vaccination site, but as soon as we get word, we will be able to. About four percent of the county has been vaccinated. And again, it's due to a severe supply shortage, an unpredictable supply chain, we don't know from week to week how much of that. We don't control as a city a lot of the vaccine, most of it is controlled by these multi-county entities or Kaiser's. We are partnering with them in the vaccination clinics, the massive act sites, and they have control over the vaccine. And then, of course, the frequently changing federal and state regs makes it hard, just very hard to plan. So I know that there's a lot of frustration, it's understandable, but it's, it's, I think, even more frustrating as a county administrator, because we don't have much control. We don't set the priority, we don't control the vaccine, we just sort of react when they tell us. So let me pause there and see thirty questions, particularly about COVID, but anything else before I go into the portion of my report. Commissioners, any questions?
Trent.
Yes, Commissioner.
I answered most of them, but it's very frustrating. It's very hard for individuals to get an opportunity to get the vaccine, so I understand your frustration. And I don't, I don't know how you can explain it, why we're not being introduced as a bad job.
You know, one of the factors that's compounding factors for San Francisco is, so the state has been, it appears, they're very quiet about how they're allocating it from county to county, but if you look at the number in the city and county, it's about two and a half. Two and a half percent of the statewide allocation overall, and that's, and San Francisco is about two to two and a half percent of the statewide population, so it appears they're sending the vaccine out based on that, sort of a population percent to total. What makes that tricky in San Francisco is just the large number of healthcare provider, healthcare workers we have in the city. So we're responsible to provide vaccinations for healthcare workers who work in the city, whether or not they live in the city. Um, and with UCSF and with the number of hospitals we have, that's a lot. We also have a higher than average, higher than, than for the state average of IHSS, In-Homes Support Services providers, twenty, over twenty-two thousand, all of whom are in Tier One A, many of whom who don't live in San Francisco. And we also have a higher-than-average percentage of individuals over sixty-five living in the city, it's eighteen, nineteen percent statewide average. You know, that wasn't, it doesn't appear that those factors are taken into account when allocating vaccines, vaccines across the state to different counties. If it were, we would be getting more than what we've received, so that adds to the as you said, Commissioners, some of the frustration and the difficulty.
Thank you.
Sure. And it also has, and I'll just conclude with this, you know, people are frustrated because they don't feel like they're getting information put out by the Department of Public Health or others. It's just, it's, it's hard to put out information when we don't have the information, right? People wanna say, San Francisco now has a hundred thousand vaccines, and we're gonna do them over the next seven days, we just don't have that level of information, which is, you know, hopefully that will improve, but, um, you know, it's again, frustrating is the word. Um, okay, so as we move now, we move into the program area. So our finance, but we're gonna have the budget presentation today from Dan Kaplan and myself, so I need to report on that. In our facilities area, we have health and safety plans approved for most of our buildings now. The only thing pending now is our facility at thirty-eight oh one, Third Street in sixteen fifty Mission, so you know, these are required health and safety plans required by the city administrator, and they sign off on them, so we're moving quickly to get those all in place. In S F benefits net, let me touch on CalFresh now, and this is tied to the increases in support from the federal government. So in no particular order, I'll walk through everything that's been increased through SNAP, which is supplemental nutritional assistance program, that's the federal name in California, and locally, it's called California. All CalFresh households will receive immediately a fifteen percent increase in their monthly benefits starting this month, so that's just across the board, and that will continue for six months. Just to give you a sense of scale, I think the average household benefit around for families is something like three hundred and fifty dollars, three fifty to four hundred, so fifteen percent, you can do the math quickly, it's you know, an increase of about sixty dollars a month on average, would be fifteen percent. But in addition, pandemic EBT, which is food dollars equivalent to what a child who's receiving school lunch would receive each day, because children aren't in school, obviously, they're not receiving a school lunch, breakfast or lunch. So that was increased also by fifteen percent and is continuing for households. The telephonic signature waiver now extends to the end of February, I mentioned the telephonic signature earlier, and the importance of being able to use that to get households onto assistance. And then a big change that will impact our caseload potentially quite a bit is student eligibility. So the student, if you're a college student, you're eligible for CalFresh, if you're in work study or doing work study. They've loosened those rules now to apply to eligibleize college students who are eligible for work study, but they're not, you don't have to be doing work studies. Basically, low-income college students would be eligible for CalFresh. There could be as many as five to six thousand San Francisco college students eligible, which would be, you know, sort of a big impact on our application of the next number of months, so we're beginning to sort that out to see what additional training and overtime authorization we may need to do for, to make sure that those students can receive the benefits that they're, that they're entitled to. In Medi-Cal, renewals and negative actions continue to be suspended, and will likely remain one, and that means people are not losing their healthcare due to not turning in certain forms, the annual recertification requirements are all suspended, so it's basically continued for Medi-Cal, which is in, in County Dollar Assistance, I just want to highlight one piece of good work being done around our triage services, which is a triage in cap is basically, it's a clinical employability assessment that assesses an individual's ability triage in cap is basically it's a clinical employability assessment that then assesses an individual's ability to to work, basically, sort of what is the individual's level of disability? And if the assessment is that the individual is too disabled to work, then we assist that client into applying for federal SSI. Triage is voluntary because there aren't any work requirements right now. But with better messaging from our intake staff at cap about the benefits of SSI for our disabled population, we've increased the show rate for triage appointments to about seventy percent. This is the comparisons about fifty percent on the prior four weeks. So it's really important that disabled clients go on that track to SSI so they can hopefully get on federal disability, which more than doubles monthly. We also had a thirty-two percent increase in referrals over to SSI case management and triage, which means the screening is 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 working and more people are beginning to be served. In family and services, a few items I want to talk about. One is the what's called the Family Urgent Response System or FERS. It's basically it's a mobile response system for families who are in crisis, who are engaged in child welfare. So it could be a foster foster parents who are having sort of a crisis situation with their foster children. It could be families who are in family family maintenance. So we're working with them to stay intact. And it's a way for us to get out in partnership with mental health and preserve a placement, right? It's the it's all around sort of family stability and doing what we can in almost real time to make sure that a foster parent, for example, doesn't say, you know, I can't handle this child anymore. I can't take care of him or her anymore. We would come in prior to that. Similarly, with families who are, we're trying to keep intact by providing we're really one of the we are one of the leaders across the state in developing the system. We're one of the early ones to do it, leading the partner is Seneca, Seneca Center, which has clinicians that partner with us to do these visits that are triggered by a call to a crisis, a crisis. So that is is getting off the ground statewide, but we've been, we're sort of ahead of the game on the state. And really interesting to see as this rolls out, and this is done through additional state resources in the government budget last year to see what impact we have on preserving placements, keeping together. So one of the challenges, and I see that is ISM is on the on the Zoom because adoptions is under her leadership and is doing adoptions in a virtual world. And we, I'm very happy to say that we do, we are continuing to do adoptions on Monday. We'll be finalizing eight adoption. We've been doing about six adoptions per month since the pandemic started. And that's really, if I look back about the the annual average, we knew maybe seventy-five and a hundred on average. And so it looks like we're keeping up with with what our average number of adoptions is. And that's, of course, critically important piece of child welfare and that establishes permanency for children by being adopted by by loving parents and new parents. And so the ability to do that virtually is, you know, testament to the hard work of our protective service workers and the leadership of of Miss Sophia Isom. So thank you for for that. Our work is so different and so much more challenging in so many ways under this pandemic. So thank you, guys. And Sophia, please thank your team for me. You bet. And then another piece that's under Sophia is around our resource family recruitment. And we launched, we launched a recruitment campaign in partnership with our communications office before the pandemic, we had to pause that as the pandemic unfolded. And so what we've done since is launched a second public awareness campaign to educate San Franciscans on the need for foster homes and ability to become foster parents, or she now called resource families. Our initial campaign was a success. We, while it lasted, it was short. We had thirty people just in a short period of time apply, become foster parents due to the first campaign. But picking up where we left off, the new campaign focuses on the fact that still more than half of our kids that we have to remove from their birth parents are placed outside of the city. A lot of due to a lot of factors, one of them being a shortage of resource families in San Francisco. So the advertisements depict San Francisco icons like the Oakdale Bridge, missing architectural elements. So like, you'll see the bridge span and it's missing like one of the pillars. And and that missing piece represents children being placed out of the city. And the ad states, we lose a piece of our city when foster kids are placed outside San Francisco. Right now, there are more foster kids than there are safe, loving homes available, and you can help change that. A hundred foster families needed today. And it's hashtag foster it forward. We have ads running on billboards, streetlight banners, Facebook, Instagram, all the social media. It's really a neat, a neat campaign. And we presented it to several groups with really positive feedback. So kudos to our comms team, Chandra Johnson and Sophia and her team as well. So hopefully this will generate generate interest because it really is a sort of eye-catching and interesting. You know, talks about how important our kids are to us in San Francisco and keeping them in San Francisco is, I think, a value that we all share as a community. So I'll conclude with that. And of course, open, open up any questions or comments, commissioners.
Thank you, Trent. Any any members of the commission have any questions?
I don't have a question, I'm more more a comment. I applaud your work for the foster children. They really trouble me. And it's so, so important to find proper homes. Thank you very much for that work.
Thank you, Commissioner. I agree.
Yeah, I would just like James McCray, Mr. Chair, I would like to just did did all that. It's been due to the heart of the community, particularly the African-American faith communities for years. So this this campaign, I I'm glad to hear it coming out and letting the community know that we are seeking to be responsive. And we need, we need response from them. So thank you very much. Good, good action.
Thank you.
About the adoptions. Oh, Miss Isom and the others, thank you so very much. That's, that's great to hear that we're touching people's heart to join us that that deeply with that much love. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
In in the past, they've had sort of a a program where everybody showed up. I think it was at the Superior Court, as I recall, thanking the foster parents. Was that an event that you put on? Or, I mean, I know the human service agencies did, but it was always a very
Sophia, that was the teddy bear. That's the teddy bear, right?
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, we don't, we're not doing that now.
Of course.
Yeah. That is something that we celebrate with the court in the past, yeah.
Often on National Adoptions Day, I believe, in November or something.
It's in November, but we didn't do it last year because of the pandemic. And hopefully, if things settle down, we may be able to do it this year, but it's a wonderful event. And there again, kudos to my adoption team and the court office team and all the PSWs. It's a wonderful event and acknowledgement.
It's a very loving, warm event to attend. I'm sorry that you won't be able to have it, but I do understand. And you're doing a great job.
Well, hopefully, we can have it this by November. Thanks, Alan, for reminding us.
Okay, moving on to item five on our agenda, the presentation of the employee of the month, who is David Niang and Child Protective Service Worker. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, but somebody will correct me very shortly, I'm sure. The commission is pleased to announce that David Niang, a Child Protective Service Worker with Family and Children's Services, is our January twenty twenty-one Employee of the Month. David is a tireless and committed Child Protective Service Worker. David earned a Master of Social Work in nineteen ninety-six from San Francisco State University and was a stipend recipient in the Title IV E program. He began his employment with the Human Service Agency in nineteen ninety-seven. He has worked in several functions within the Family and Children's Services over his career, including the Family Services Unit for seven years and PPTPU, which became the Supportive Transition Unit for the past sixteen years. David is one of the agency's subject matter experts with the sixteen to twenty-one-year-old client population. His expertise covers all aspects of case management and service delivery to those youth and families in the Supportive Transition Unit. David is a subject matter expert in placement availability, resources and services for Asian clients. David has also participated as a co-chair in the meetings with the San Francisco Juvenile Probation Department. He has been very effective at addressing the issues that arise with youth involved in the juvenile justice system, who are also dependents in foster care. David goes above and beyond in his services to clients, the agency and his colleagues, and he is always one of the first to volunteer to support his fellow protective service workers. David has spent countless hours traveling and delivering services to our youth and families, both in and out of state, and has taken on participation in focus groups and on panels to address service delivery and planning needs in family. Hold on, I gotta turn the page here. Children's Services. David manages a very high caseload in his unit and does so with a great diligence and expertise. He has handled some of the agency's toughest cases. Recently, he covered a case for a colleague who was out on leave. David was able to engage a client who had been AWOL for more than a year and who was involved in commercially sexually exploited children, activity and substance abuse. David was able to engage the client in services where others were unsuccessful. David's perseverance in this case is a testament to the hard work he puts in in all the cases he managed. His clients are well cared for because of his professional work ethic and engagement abilities. David is an invaluable employee who deserves agency-wide recognition for his stellar contributions and commitment to the youth and families we serve. Congratulations, David. And now I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Rohr for his comments. And then David, after Mr. Rohr speaks, if you have anything to say, we'd like you to say something. So congratulations.
Congratulations, David. I wish, wish we could celebrate and honor you in person, of course. But, you know, looking through the chat, I see so many acknowledgements from your colleagues at the agency. And that always, you know, obviously says volumes that that you're so respected by. You know, not only your supervisors, managers, but also by your colleagues. And so I hope you feel very proud of that. And I feel, you know, your, my view, you know, sort of working with with teens is you know, working with my own teens is hard, but working with teams that you're who engages the child welfare system is very challenging and can be very challenging. Hats off to you for you know, doing a lot of good and going the extra mile to ensure that that, you know, our teens who are still unfortunately in in foster care are protected and are moving towards a path that's positive in their lives. So David, thank you very much. Really appreciate on behalf of the whole agency.
Thank you.
David, now I'm going to call on you to see if you have anything that you'd like to add.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Rohr. Good morning, everyone. It is an honor to accept this employee of the month recognition. I feel humble to be working among a great team of colleagues. I would not be able to accomplish this work without our supporting behind me. You are have been a part of the successes that I have had in working with our foster youth and their families. I feel blessed to be part of our mission to help this underserved population. Once again, thank you for the nomination, and I wish everyone stays safe and healthy during this pandemic.
Thank you, David. Oh, David, we have a little gift for you, which will be delivered to you, probably delivered to your desk. As a memento for you to keep in your home or on your desk to remind you of becoming the employee of the month. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving on to item six, calling on Dan Kaplan for the first presentation regarding the Department of Benefits and Family Supports Budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three. Dan?
Thank you, President Khan. Good morning, commissioners. Liz is putting up the the presentation now. So this is the first of two presentations we'll give on the budget. This is our normal practice. And in this first presentation, I will review the current budget, the current year budget. We'll look at current caseloads and projections of caseloads. We're going to look at the city's overall financial situation and talk about the mayor's budget instructions and the factors driving it. And then we're going to give a tiny bit of attention to the overall federal and state context in which we make this budget. Trent talked a little bit about recent events in in both federal and state programming. And as you can get a sense from Trent's comments, this is a quickly evolving area. So in two weeks, we will be back and we will present to you a proposal that we will be proposing to submit to the mayor and we'll be asking for your approval on that submission. And then in the week or so after that, we'll be sort of hammering out the final technical details and we'll be submitting a budget to the mayor on or before February twenty-second. But before I really start on the presentation, I'd like to just say that the building of budgets is is actually a very broad effort in our agency and and certainly all of the program divisions get involved, all of the programs get involved. But the work is coordinated by our budget team, which is seven people. And this time of year, they are doing a vast amount of work, pulling together the pieces, setting up decisions for those of us who have to make decisions on this, make and making sure the process flows along. So I just want to mention the people who've been key in coordinating this are Budget Director Emily Gibbs, Principal Analyst Caitlin Rohr, Senior Analyst Justin Chan and Molly Chow and Alex Gleason and J.J. Burke and Carolyn Boosie. So that's, that's the team that really pulls this work together. Liz, may we go to the next slide? Thank you. So when we describe the budget, we we do it from different angles. And and this is the first of several. In this picture, in this representation of the budget, we are describing it by program. So the slices of the pie here that add up to six hundred and four million dollars are are familiar programs. There are programs that that Trent tends to touch on in his in his regular reports. They are the programs that support contracts that come before you. You know, as you can see, they fall into several areas. The ESSS Economic Support and Self-Sufficiency Programs comprise CalWorks Welfare to Work, CAP. CalWorks Child Care is actually provided through work of O E C E, but it is certainly in the SSS budget. S F Benefits Net, which works on Medi-Cal and CalFresh eligibility, S F B N Operations, which supports the operations of our service centers and our records management functions. Family and Children Services, which you're very familiar with, is a second large group. A third area in here is the, what we've called the Care-Not Cash Savings. And these are dollars that are meant to represent the savings within the CAP program resulting from Care-Not Cash. And these are dollars that go to support supportive housing efforts now delivered by homelessness and supportive housing. And then the last group is the Program Support Group, which I'll mention again later on, but which comprises a number of support functions that support DBFS programs, also support DAS and also support OEECE. May we go to the next slide? So just to get a sense of where the people are, I asked the budget unit to, to put together this slide. So, you know, this doesn't have every pie slice that the previous one did, but it has all the pie slices in which there are staff. So again, you can see on the, the left side of, of this picture, we have the ESSS programs. Up at the top right, we have Family and Children Services. And then at the, the bottom right, the, the bottom right section, we have the Program Support Group. So as you can see, most of this budget is, is around the SSS programs, the eligibility and the workforce programs. That, that's where we do the very high volume of contact with clients, and that's where a large share of the staff is. Family and Children Services at about 400 folks. And then Program Support at 366, being the smallest of these three groups. If, if we had the other pieces of the agency outside of this commission's purview, DAS would be in here at also around 400-ish and, and OEECE at about 25 or so. So that would make up the whole of the Human Services Agents. Lizbeth, can we go to the next slide? So, oh, yeah. So on this slide, we talk about where the money comes from. And, and so there are a number of buckets that have been identified here. But the, the key notion is that HSA DBFS programs are supported by a mix of federal, state and local money. So the federal money is, is largely in this large pie slice that's, that's called federal, $270 million, representing 45% of the whole. And that supports many, many of our programs, certainly in the area of, of the benefits programs. We have TANF money, we have SNAP money, we have Medi-Cal money. In the Family and Children Services money, we have Title IV, IVB money and Title IV money. And, and these are the big federal sources, and they're, they're tied to expenditures in the programs. Then under state programs, we have several buckets. So we have what here is labeled as state at $69 million. This is generally a state share of the cost of various benefit programs, or the programs that support the benefit programs, the administrative side that supports the benefit programs. We also have three buckets that are labeled realignment. So there's 2011 realignment, AV85, 2011 realignment and 1991. And these are all dollars that flow to social services agencies to support different program areas. These are not state general funds. These are state funds that are generated by the state sales tax and the state vehicle licensing fee. And they come to social services agencies on a formula. So they're not tied to our immediate expenditures as the, the pie slice labeled state is and the federal slice as well. They're, they're driven by a formula. And what's interesting about these buckets, of course, is that they, they tend to go up in value when the economy is strong and they tend to go down in value when the economy weak. And, and during the last recession, about 10 years ago, there was a huge drop in, in the amount of money that came into social services during these, from these sources. There was a great fear that that would happen from the, from the pandemic recession as well. The state had projected that, that last fiscal year, there'd be a drop of about 15% in, in money through these sources and that there would be a more or less comparable drop this year. The legislature stepped in and put in about $1 billion. Well, it turned out to be about three quarters of, of $1 billion of, of money to backfill the loss statewide in, in realignment funds. And those were parsed out to the counties. What, what happened and what was sort of strange in, in this recession is there was much less of a drop in revenue from these sources than was anticipated. There was a little bit, but, but it was very small compared to what was anticipated. And that is an artifact of the very uneven nature of the recession in terms of who it hits. It tended to hit lower wage workers much harder. It also is an artifact of the, the federal efforts to provide broader and more generous unemployment benefits than, than generally is the case. So, but people continue to have money to buy things that would generate sales. And then there are a few, oh, first, then there's general funds. General funds being city funds that come in through city taxes and are allocated to individual city agencies. And then there are a few smaller buckets in here. So there's a work order recovery slice. Work order recovery is money that comes to the agency from other agencies normally do a specific activity. So there's some money in here from Wreckin' Park for the Park Stop Program, which has been discussed by this commission. There's some money for, from Muni, from the, for the Fast Pass Program. We get involved in administering that. And then there's, we provide some security services for, for children's support services. So that's what goes into that bucket. And then there's another bucket, which is called Dedicated Gifts and Grants, $1.6 million. And that has a SNAP technology grant in it. It has refugee services money and it has a few smaller dollars that come to us from the state, which are, you know, spec, special buckets of money. Liz, may we go to the next slide? Thanks. So another view of the budget is what we call categories. And these are really the kinds of expenditures we make. So in looking at this slide, you can see that on the left side, I think our biggest signal bucket is salaries. So this is the money that supports the salaries of the staff. And then right next to that, there is money that supports fringe benefits for staff. So you put those two buckets together, they're 46% of the budget. So that gives you a sense of, of where the, where a big piece of the HSA budget is going. There are professional services contracts, which include things like building rent, information and technology contracts, software licensing, security services for the buildings, payments that support the, the state automated welfare system that we use and the new system that is being built, referred to as SAA systems. There is a slice called Aid Assistance, which includes money that we spend for childcare for CalWorks clients. It includes the Jobs Now subsidy, subsidies that we pay out under the WDD program. It includes the displaced persons, housing and hazardous housing funds are in that group. There's the materials and supplies bucket, which is mainly an IT equipment bucket. It includes office supplies and building maintenance supplies. And then there are work order services, and these are dollars that we pay to other agencies to provide services of one sort or another for the operations of the agency. And these include money that we pay to public health, mainly to support mental health services, not entirely, real estate leases that we pay through the real estate department as opposed to directly, services that we get from the city's central IT office and city service, city attorney services being the, the largest buckets. And then there is one slice that is labeled operating transfer in. That's a very budgety term, but this is where we put the Care-Not Cash Transfer Balance that we, we pay over to homelessness and supportive housing. So Liz, may we go to the next slide? One of the things that we always do as we're building this budget is we try and look at where caseloads have been trending and where we think they will be trending in the future. This is an interesting year, certainly. I guess they're all interesting. This may be a little more interesting than most. And, and so I just talked for a moment about our caseload. So you can see there are five major caseloads that are identified on this slide. CalWorks caseload, as you can see, has been declining for many years. The CalWorks caseload is not perfectly correlated, but fairly well correlated, certainly influenced by the strength of the economy. And in the, in the years represented here, which are basically between the last recession and, and the current point, and then a projection for a couple of years after that, what you see is there's been decline. There was a strong economy and then we got to the pandemic in, in March of, of 20, and the caseload blipped up a little bit. Part of that was certainly that we had waivers on, on some of the actions that would have caused people to go off of CalWorks. This also happened in, in CalFresh and in Medi-Cal and in CAP. And so we had a blip up then. Caseloads started coming down again early this year, and we are projecting that they will start to go up again over the, the next couple of years. I should say, with regards to the CalWorks program, the state, when it built its budget for the current year, assumed a really massive increase in CalWorks population because of the pandemic and because of the work dislocation that was assumed would follow after that. And then we didn't see the caseload growth that we thought we would. This is a statewide phenomenon. As I mentioned before, this was a recession where there were strong unemployment benefits that, that lasted for a long time and were pretty broadly available. The, the pandemic has also been interested in that sort of the start and stop nature of, of work during the pandemic. So we are assuming in this forecast that, that ultimately the federal benefits will begin to be pulled back and, and we will start to see caseload increase. So, you know, as Trent said, when he was giving his report, new word out of the Biden administration suggests there, there may be more benefits going forward. This forecast was made before inauguration day. And so as we go through the budget-making process, we will be relooking at what we think caseloads will be doing. Foster care is a caseload that has also been declining for many years. That's partly an artifact of practice and to some extent, an artifact of, of city demographics. And, and we are assuming that that trend will more or less continue going forward. The CAP program, as you can see, also had a period of decline in caseload since the last recession, then jumped up at the beginning of the pandemic, and then actually started declining fairly precipitously after the beginning of the pandemic. And, I mean, after July 1st. And, and this is a phenomenon that's occurred throughout many California counties, certainly in the Bay Area. And again, we are assuming that, that when benefits, unemployment benefits become less available, we will start to see a rapid increase in the CAP population. And then as the economy begins to, to warm up again, that we will start seeing a decrease again. This has been a little bit tricky to forecast. And, and as I said, I think that, that many of us were a little bit surprised by the rapidity of the decline of the CAP program this year. When we get to Medi-Cal and CalFresh, you see different patterns. So the, the great increase in the Medi-Cal program that happens around 14, 15 is, is the Affordable Care Act kicking in. We got to a peak around 15, and then we had a period of decline in caseload during the strong economic years. And then as, as the waivers that Trent mentioned before start to kick in, we started to see an increase. We are assuming that increase will continue over the next couple of years as we're coming out of the recession. CalFresh, we also had a very big increase. It was later than the Affordable Care Act increased and ties to a change in state policy about providing CalFresh benefits to people on SSI. Up until 19, we weren't doing that in California. There were, they, they were quote unquote cashed out. Now SSI recipients are eligible for CalFresh benefits. The first part of this increase is due to the SS, the SSI recipients being able to come in and, and be able to get CalFresh benefits. The second part of the increase is really due to the pandemic. And this is an area where there's been a huge uptake in, in caseload. And this is certainly true in San Francisco, but it's true throughout the state as well. So that, that's where we are on caseloads. Liz, can we go to the next slide? So now I want to kind of turn a corner here and talk about city budget and, and sort of what's driving mayoral instructions in the city. So as you know, the city's mayor's budget office, the controller's office and the budget and legislative analyst office come together and, and do, and then regularly update a five-year projection, certainly for, certainly the five-year projection in general is interesting. certainly the five-year projection in general is interesting. The the first two years of it guide us in the making of the biennial budget. And what this slide does is it depicts the financial situation at the highest level. So you can see in the budget year 21, 22, the forecasters are expecting a drop in city revenue. And and that is because of weak economic conditions due to the pandemic. And then in the subsequent year, there is a an uptick, an uptick in revenue, not a dramatic one, but certainly the expectation is the economy will will start to get a little bit stronger as we go into 2023. On the expenditure side, we are assuming an increase in expenditures of close to $300 million as we go into the budget year. A big driver on that half of that is salary and benefit costs associated with existing labor agreements. There are dollars that go into baseline and reserve funds. By formula, there are special departmental costs that are tracked by the Controller's Office and the MBO sort of outside of regular inflation. And those are the one that is within the HSA is actually in DOS. That's the IHSS MOE. And these are costs that grow according to their their own schedules. They're not inflationary simply. And then there are citywide uses, which are more inflationary things. And as you can see from the note there, there's, these are things like the impact of minimum wage changes, expected utility rate changes, debt service, et cetera. So the the big takeaway here is that we have a fairly good sized deficit to balance around in the budget year and then a smaller, but certainly not trivial deficit to balance around in this subsequent year. Liz, may we go to the next slide? So in in looking at this, as I said before, the the revenue impacts are really tied to weakened economy, certainly in San Francisco, hotel and sales taxes and business taxes are very important for the overall city fiscal picture, and those are down. As I mentioned before, this forecast was was built before the governor released his budget on Janu- in early January. It was before the Biden administration came in. So some of the assumptions are a little more conservative than I think they'd be if we made them today. And then, let's see. And then there are, of course, special citywide costs this year and next year that that would not be there in most years, the most important of which being COVID-19 response costs. And then I guess the final point here is that in balancing this year's budget, which had about a one and a half billion dollar deficit associated with it, the the city used a lot of reserve money. And so that was a good thing to do in a very dire situation, but but much less in the way of reserve money is available now than it was a year ago. Maybe go to the next slide. So every time that we have a deficit, you know, there is a question as to whether it can be balanced centrally or whether the mayor's office will need reductions from individual departments. During this biennial budget making process, the mayor has asked us to reduce general fund expenses by 7.5%, which, as you can see from this slide, is $7.3 million in each year. So HSA has general funds in a number of different areas, and those in the aid budget are generally not included in this calculation. So these would be what from the outside look like discre- you know, a share of discretionary general fund costs. And then the mayor has also said that department shouldn't increase their FTE counts, that they should prioritize core services and that they should emphasize priorities of recovery from the recession and equity. So as part of our work, we will be balancing around the 7.3 million dollar reduction in city general funds. Can we go to the next slide? So one of the
Mr. McCray, excuse me, Mr. Kaplan, question. Ask a question now. Do we have any sense of what the mayor's emphasis on priorities for recovery and equity may mean within our departments? And a cost for that?
Well, I I feel like that in doing this, HSA focuses most of its effort, almost all of its effort, on lower income San Franciscans. And and, you know, I feel that that our emphasis is in a place that is conducive to meeting the mayor's priorities just through our regular work. As we've begun to talk about proposals going forward into the budget year, which I won't talk about today, but we'll talk about when I'm back two weeks from now. We are certainly thinking in terms of getting benefits to people who may be missed by the federal and state efforts that are coming down. And we're especially concerned with undocumented citizens of the city. So that would be another way we would be focusing on equity as we go forward. So federal and state budget context. So one of the things that was interesting about this particular year is interesting about the the state budget going forward is that we had anticipated a huge drop in state revenues. And in fact, a much smaller drop occurred. I mentioned the really realignment revenues before. State income taxes are actually much higher than anticipated, and that is also because of the unevenness of the recession. It's also the case that California's state revenues are very tied to are very affected by swings in stock market and stock market has been very strong. So the state has has more money than it anticipated. And one of the things that it has done in the governor's budget, it had is that it has invested in programs that are are really programs for for lower income individuals. Trent mentioned some of the stimulus activities that the state is supporting in his report. But in our more traditional programs, we've had very strong allocation. So the Medi-Cal administrative allocation has gone up. The CalFresh allocation has gone up a good bit. The CalWorks allocation went up a good bit in the current year in anticipation of that huge caseload in increase that I mentioned before. But even though the caseload increase was much less than anticipated, the CalWorks allocation for next fiscal year is still held at a higher level. And and the good news in that is this really fairly large increase in allocations allows us to cover those reductions, the reduction target. So as we're looking at it now, we are believing that we can cover the reductions without making cuts to either staff benefits or CBO run programs. Good news from this. May we go to the next slide? All right. So at this point, I would like to turn this over to Trent, who will talk about highlights of the last year and and sort of things we're focusing on going forward. And then at the end, we can both take questions. Thanks a lot.
Trying to get out. There we go. Technical issues. Okay, so thanks, Dan. The detailed presentation on the mechanics. So I want to talk through a little bit of what you know, what our budget is going to be paying for. You know, the budget's a policy and program document and behind the numbers are our programs and initiatives. And so I'll start with the COVID-19 response, which of course is, you know, extensive response and also expensive. And so within that, of course, we had a lot, we have a lot of staff who are deployed as disaster service workers working on the COVID response, supporting the hoteling effort, feeding food coordination and and other initiatives under COVID. We can't do this, of course, without collaborating with the Department of Homelessness and Supportive Housing and Department of Public Health. As I've said before, or you know, reported to before, we have over 2,800 hotel rooms and trailers at a Pier 94 and 200 new shelter beds that we opened and we're supporting. I session quarantine sites for individuals who are COVID positive and of course, vulnerable homeless. You know, I shared the news earlier that it's now 100% funded by FEMA, yet there are other general fund costs over and above FEMA that that we will have to pay for. FEMA is not money upfront. FEMA is a reimbursement. And so it's really important for us to track all of our expenditures and work with the Controller's Office and the Cost Recovery Team to maximize those FEMA reimbursements when we submit claims for them. The other big piece of the response is our food coordination. We expanded significantly our food pantry program, home delivered meals, which of course is really important, given that the vulnerable population, we want them to stay at home. Literally tens of thousands of households we have supported and fed through food pantries and and other interventions. So next slide. Okay, so the program support sort of division function in in HSA is is kind of the back, the the backbone of the agency in terms of in terms of letting us deliver the programs and services that we do. So this includes our planning division, communications, our budget staff contracts, finance, HR, infrared, IT facilities and disaster prep. Those are just some highlights within the program operations under the Human Services Agency. One of our top priorities is, of course, that we've mentioned before, building out our DEIB team, our diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging office to be able to implement the racial equity action plan that we submitted to the city's office, racial equity. We have our new brand rollout, which you see a product of that behind me that our comms team is leading. A huge undertaking and actually really worthy of recognition is our information technology division and its director Natalie Toledo, were able to really pivot very, very quickly from in-office operations to a telecommuting method of delivering services. Over 85% of our staff are actually actively telecommuting. This involves significant IT resources, laptops, connectivity and the like to label staff to be able to telecommute. We are transitioning over to a new information system that will be, it's a statewide system that is what we use to determine eligibility for all of our all of our benefits. It's called CALSAWS. It's replacing what is called CALWIN. Although the system won't go live and be operational in San Francisco until 2023, there's a tremendous amount of planning to do. Whenever you introduce a new information technology system, it allows us to, you know, the the system and the way it's designed, it's the attempt is always to design it to mirror what we do program, what we do operationally within programs. But once it sort of comes out and when you try to make it work in all 58 counties, all of all of whom have a little bit different the way we deliver benefits, it will result in some changes in the way that we operate our benefits programs. And so there'll be a lot of training, a lot of involvement with the statewide CALSAWS team in terms of functionality and and user testing and and really making sure that the system supports our needs. And then 170 Otis Street, the building, of course, where the commission hearing room is, does not meet current seismic safety standards. And so in the city's capital plan, as well as in our budget, we're looking towards, this would be this year two of our budget, funding costs related to move out and relocation of a lot, a lot a lot of staff and our program operations. We don't yet, I should say, we don't let yet know what that's going to look like. I think that this telecommuting over through the pandemic has really opened our eyes to what we are able to do in a remote environment. And that's going to inform our thinking as we move forward. On our facility side, sort of what do our offices look like? Are they smaller neighborhood type offices? Are they spaces for hoteling where where many staff will come in at different periods throughout the week or month to use cubicles? This means we need a a smaller footprint. So there's really a lot of thinking that needs to go in behind the 170 Otis transition out of 170 Otis. It's not just simply finding a building that's similar in size. It really is an opportunity to relook at how where our offices are in the city, where we have physical locations and how that So highlights in the Department of Benefits and Family Supports. Of course, we've seen a steady caseload rise in Medi-Cal and CalFresh due to not only increased need, but due to some relaxation of of renewal requirements that I talked about in Medi-Cal. We anticipate that continuing to grow, and that means either more staff or or the same staff doing more overtime and increased costs that, as Dan mentioned, are funded by the state predominantly. Current suspension of the ABOD requirement, if you recall, this is the requirement that single adults between the ages of 18 and 49 have to work in exchange for their CalFresh benefits. That has been suspended due to the pandemic, and we are not sure when those requirements will resume. That, of course, is our obligation to provide those range of work activities to allow CalFresh recipients to continue to receive their benefits. And also as a tangent to hopefully transition many of them into employment and ultimately off. A lot of technological adjustments. I talked about telecommuting already, telephonic signature I mentioned in my report. And we do have a federal grant to enhance sort of online delivery and and remote delivery of CalFresh. And and a really a neat thing that we were able to do, sort of over and over again, that, you know, staff at HSA are really, I think, really being thoughtful and innovative about how to turn a pretty crappy situation of the pandemic and into sort of opportunities to get more needy individuals onto aid. And an example of that is San Francisco SF Benefits Net staff in our shelter in place hotels, trying to do benefits enrollment for homeless individuals who we've housed recently. And even though they may be housed only on a temporary basis in the hotels, hopefully permanently after the hotels, it is an opportunity to get get the individuals onto cash assistance, onto CalFresh, onto Medi-Cal. Obviously, much harder to do that work when homeless individuals are living on the street. So that that is really a positive byproduct of that creativity of our program management. Thanks. So I mentioned the outreach to benefits enrollments. You can see on the slide, 648 individuals on CalFresh, 268 on the cap and almost 300, over 350 onto Medi-Cal. You might ask, well, hey, your your housing, you've housed over 22, 2300 people. Those numbers seem low. Well, some of them may already be on those benefits and then some might not be eligible. For example, for cap as they might be on SSI or on unemployment insurance or something like that. So we continue to work in those hotels, though, and those numbers will continue to increase. I mentioned SSI advocacy and the triage in my report as well. We, we have been doing a pilot program with Tipping Point Community, a nonprofit that's funding us to do sort of enhanced SSI advocacy with a legal arm to increase the number of folks who get eligible. And we're trying to, we did this pilot to see if the up, the approval rate and the appeal win rate would be higher with this intensive sort of legal and social work intervention with Tipping Point. So we'll continue to evaluate that and whether or not that's worth either bringing in house or continuing in some other manner. And then homeless disability advocacy program or Hdap, which is state funding for homeless individuals who are moving towards SSI who are disabled. It's basically a housing subsidy program for that population that we're able to support our SIP hotel efforts using that state money. And I county adult assistance program. So unlike CalFresh and Medi-Cal and CalWorks to an extent, the cap case load has declined fairly steadily since July. And, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to prove sort of a negative, if you will. It's hard to sort of understand why people aren't coming in because they're not in front of you. But we, we're looking at sort of the case load and how it tracks compared to the the stimulus investments, particularly extension of unemployment benefits and the increase in unemployment benefits. And we think that has had an impact on eligibility for cap. The cap program tends to be a little more, the case load is a little more responsive to changes in the economy and the unemployment rate, unlike CalWorks. And CalFresh and Medi-Cal to an extent, but cap seems to have more sensitivity to that. And I think that's what we're seeing there in terms of the decline. And we are anticipating once those unemployment enhance, enhance our unemployment benefits and that we would see an increase in applicants to the county. We have suspended the work activities and the workforce requirement for the pandemic. Of course, to help keep clients safe and not putting them out into the workforce where they're in, like others. Again, technology investments, like meeting staff, receiving applications digitally through our online portal, phone intake process for the first time ever in cap. Cap was always an in-person transaction. So that could have a little bit to do with the case load decline and sort of clients not used to this. But we really are doing, making, I think, extraordinary efforts to ensure and maximize the availability of cap through these sort of different modes, you know, phone and online. And then we are engaged with sort of quality assurance improvements to sort of constantly, as we do in a lot of our programs, look at staff experience in this type of work, customer experience and seeing there's opportunities to improve. So in CalWorks, similar to cap, the state has relaxed the welfare to work requirements. We are not being held right now to a mandated work participation rate. Again, it has to do with the pandemic, keeping families safe. It also, it makes sense in that a lot of jobs have gone away temporarily. And so you sort of asked the question, why would be, why would be we requiring, excuse me, requiring parents to engage in work activities where at the end of those in that job training or the end of that set of work activities, there might not be a job available. And so we really think it's more important to keep our parents safe and our kids safe and to have them focus on assisting kids at their remote learning and really supporting their family during the pandemic rather than try to juggle, you know, a lot of what needs to be juggled when you're we have expanded our housing support program, which is critical, given the the lack of income due to the economic downturn. And this is, this is basically housing subsidies for homeless CalWorks families to end their homelessness. And then, you know, our immigrant communities, both legal immigrant communities, as well as undocumented residents have been hit disproportionately with, by COVID. Through the nature of the work, central frontline working, work and much higher COVID infection rate. Yet some of our, our households, mixed status households or undocumented households aren't eligible for the, some of the federal interventions. The expanded unemployment and stimulus payments, things like that can, aren't going to undocumented households. So we're exploring how do we better serve those families in San Francisco to make sure that they remain housed and remain supported? And have a sort of a set of interventions that we're looking to fund both current year and next year to address that gap and that will support. On a workforce development side, we did announce with the mayor expanded wage subsidy, a jobs now program. That sort of pause, that was, we announced that prior to the, to the surge, the third surge and the shutdown in December. And so that the pace of job placements of naturally has slowed, but we are prepared to pick that back up once the economy reopens more and really jobs now serves as a great support for small businesses trying to reopen as we provide support for their workforce and paying their wages, but also most importantly, getting individuals back into work and supporting them through paying their wages. We, of course, administered the other economic recovery programs, the COVID sick leave program for small businesses, just allows them to pay sick leave to their employees. Working families tax, tax credit will be rolled out. We're looking to enhance that. Perhaps. And, you know, our jobs hotlines, which, which still continue to be, be in operation. We do, in addition to workforce development program, have a new digital services program. It's really, or the goal of that is to ensure that households, that people aren't locked out for lack of, locked out of the economy because they don't have access to a laptop, to connectivity. You know, all, all job interviews right now, you know, or most job interviews are being done remotely through Zoom or another platform. And so really working to ensure that folks who are disconnected, get connected, even through the purchase of laptops, the purchase of connectivity, being able to access computers in our centers. It's mildly important in this, in this, if we're going to have our our low income households, you know, connect with the economy and not further, not only the digital design, not only the digital divide, but the income gap in San Francisco and California, the income and the wealth gap in San Francisco and digital life, digital access plays a key role in that. Next slide. Okay. In family and children's services. So I talked a bit in my report about the Family First Prevention Services Act, FFPSA. We have been operating under the 4E waiver in family and children's services, which has allowed us to draw down federal funds. Really allowed us to draw on more federal dollars than we otherwise would have given that our case load has gone down. And we've really been able to use those federal dollars to fund a lot of interventions. Well, because our case load has declined in part due to those interventions, many of those interventions. So the Family First Transition Act does away with that 4E waiver and replaces it with a different funding structure, which will result in a loss of federal dollars to us. So you see in that first bullet, the 4E waiver provided higher revenue than FFPSA. It's a much shorter and concise way of saying what I just said. So we have to identify cost reductions across our programs. Looking at what programs do we operate under the waiver that weren't as effective, didn't have as big of an impact as other programs. Looking at modification of existing programs so that they qualify for funding under FFPSA, under the prevention arm of FFPSA. We do think that we make some adjustments to the way we're delivering programs that we can draw down federal dollars, won't have to reduce service. And then we, we do have the Family First Transition Act that San Francisco, along with Los Angeles and Sacramento, were very instrumental in getting passed at the federal level. Which allows us a little bit of a bridge between full family, full FFPSA implementation and the 4E waiver. It allows us to sort of a softer landing in terms of revenue loss. And that was something that And then operational changes due to the pandemic, similar, you know, tech equipment to staff and clients for virtual meetings. So if you can't do a child parent visit in person, doing it, doing it over Zoom and providing the technological resources for families to be able to do that. We are still visiting children month, on a monthly basis in person, but when we can't due to circumstances that we can document, we will do those face to face, those face to face meetings will be virtually, of course, full personal EPE, personal protective equipment for staff for in-person visits. We're really concerned about that. And then cross-division coverage of cases to avoid service interruption. So, you know, to ensure that in this sort of virtual world with remote workforce, that cases are being covered and helping out our colleagues really in supporting these families to ensure that, that, you know, they're not lost in the virtual shuffle. And I think that might be my last slide. Elizabeth, you can go to the next. Oh, I can address the timeline as well. So you see before you, we're at the January 28th mission, first meeting. The second meeting will be in a couple of weeks. Hopefully the budget will then get approved by, by this body and then forwarded to the mayor towards the end of February. Lot of discussion, as you know, you've all been through this drill. A lot of back and forth between the mayor's budget office and the mayor between February 22nd and June to finally fully get a, get a fully flushed out budget that that will look somewhat different than the budget that is approved, hopefully in February. And then that gets submitted to the board. The board will deliberate that with hearings. June, I'm guessing those hearings will probably still be virtual would be my, would be my guess. June and July, and then budget is hopefully passed and signed by the mayor. It does, the gap does also allow us, I should say, and then I'll conclude that it does allow us, you know, time as a city and a state to get a better projection of our revenues, not only actual revenues that come in between now and June, but also for the budget year fiscal 22 and beyond. You know, the, the state does their May, May budget revision based on revised tax revenues and revised expenditure projections. And we, although we don't have a formal major vision, really that process between February and June allows us to do that. So that we're not caught off guard in the budget year should revenues not have projected revenues correctly or. So with that, I will conclude. Dan, I don't know if you have any closing remarks. Otherwise, we can just turn it over to the commission. No, okay. Commissioners?
Yes.
Questions or comments?
Thank you very much, both Dan and Trent. And I believe that we're not voting on anything now. We're voting next month.
That is correct.
So there's, there's nothing we need to do parliamentary procedure wise?
No, nothing procedurally, President Khan. And just if you had any questions or suggestions, thoughts. Or yours, and you're also, of course, able to do that in our next commission meeting.
Okay. Thank you both. Then we're going to move on to item seven, our consent calendar. Do any of my fellow commissioners want to remove an item for individual discussion? If not, the
Consent calendar.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. Moody, moving on to item eight, under Commission Business Action Items. Item A, requesting authorization to enter into a new contract agreement with Resource Development Associates to provide case management system assessment for CAAP for the period of February 1st, 2021 to October 31st, 2021. The amount is $64,000 plus a 10% contingency for $71,417. So I'm asking Dr. Ramandep Kuyer and Jason Emma Mack, Adam Mack, I think are in on the Zoom meeting. Do you have any comments?
Yes. Hi.
Thank you. Are you in Hawaii? Are you in Hawaii?
Kind of. I like that. I am, but I'm actually not. But it gives me hope that one day soon.
Yeah. Okay. Go right ahead, please.
Okay, I'll try to make this quick. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dr. Ramandip Kalar, and I'm a program manager in CAP for Client Health Services. I'm requesting authorization to enter into a new contract with Resource Development Associates, RDA. The need for services. So within CAP, we have a multidisciplinary team, the Client Health Services, which is made up of 16 peace managers, 11 psychologists, six physicians, eight administrative staff and six supervisors for each unit. The main role for the CHS team is to help clients apply for supplemental security income, which is the SSI, which includes conducting physical and psychological assessments, evaluations conducted by the psychologist and physicians, and then the case manager support our clients through the appeal process. The clerical staff supports the entire team, case managers, physicians and psychologists throughout the process. We're requesting a consultant to help look at best practices in a multidisciplinary environment that focuses on a case management type of service. Because of the qualitative work being done by case managers and clinicians, it has been difficult to determine how best to measure performance beyond the quantitative measures of submissions and acceptance of SSI referrals. The consultant can help lead discussions in a multidisciplinary environment to ascertain how we best determine quality through new qualitative measures as well as leverage our new cost system and BI technology to provide tools to the team. This consultant can also help lay out a project plan to develop new measures, develop keyway protocol and have evidence-based research from other similar systems to help inform change. And having an outside voice is also helpful in determining the needs of different staff and coming up with a fair and equitable system for distributing work and measuring performance. And this will kind of help our clients in the sense that it'll improve qualitative measures, will improve our ability to have a more efficient process to complete SSI applications. And this will also help us serve more clients. A more efficient distribution of scheduling clients will decrease the waitlist and we can serve again more clients. In the past, when pre-pandemic, we used to have extremely large waitlist and then clients would drop off and we would lose contact. So that's why I keep emphasizing on that. And we'd also be able to identify better performance measures and it will create an atmosphere which is transparent and consistent among each of the teams. And we would be able to increase teamwork flow by having better communication and help develop a better long-term preparation of client services. And the service would also help us achieve the department's mission by improving our quality of service to better serve our client. And, and the last thing, the funding will mostly be general funds with some overhead revenue. And that's all that I have. But any questions?
Are there any, is there any public comment? Well, first off, is Jason going to speak also, you know?
He's available for Jason, I think you might be on mute.
Well, something is obviously wrong. What type of doctor are you? Okay, well, I'm, we're going to move on. Is there any public comment? Jason, are you on now? Oh, yeah, you are.
Oh, I am. I am. Okay, great. Sorry. Rom, I've been talking about the presentation and she's, I think, did a fantastic job. I don't, I don't have anything else to add. It'd be great to have this service, to have an outside perspective, as she said, with a multidisciplinary team that we have. It's a very unique program. And I think having an outside consultant is going to be very helpful, especially looking at qualitative measures and how we can look beyond the widgets that we count submissions and acceptances, referrals. I said I didn't have anything to add and there you go.
Okay, well, thank you for adding what you added. Is there any public comment? If not tonight, oh, go ahead, Rita.
I wanted to move a
I wanted to move approval.
Okay. That was George. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thank you very much. Item B is election of the Human Service Commission President and Vice President commencing February first, twenty twenty-one.
Mr. President, it is my honor and privilege to work under your leadership, and I would like to move your reelection and urge the commissioners to cast a unanimous ballot.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I look forward to continuing to work with each of you. Moving forward to if there's any public comment, and I see there's. They did it.
Mr. President?
Yes?
We need to elect the vice president.
George, thank God for you. Okay, listen, I, I, go ahead, George. I thought we were voting on both.
Nominate your, your running mate. You've done very exemplary work in very trying and unprecedented times. I nominate Dr. McCray to serve as vice president for the coming year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I see that there's no public comment, so our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
The next meeting, I believe, will be February eleventh. Is that correct?
Yes.
That possibly should be noted since it is not our usual fourth Thursday meeting date.
Okay, that's fine. We'll, we'll note that, but I'm sure that Liz will be sending out notification to everybody that, that is normally included at our meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Trent.
Good service. All right.
Everyone take care.
Might you be available by phone, Trent, in about fifteen minutes?
Why don't you check with Elizabeth on my calendar? I, I could talk, just ask Elizabeth. She'll find a time later today if we can talk, talk.
Okay. All right. Well, call me whenever you wish. How about that? Let's just leave it at that. Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. Bye-bye.
Thanks, Liz. You're, you're doing a great job.
Right on, right on. Great job.
I liked your hair.
Thank you.
He is so nice.